Right, first of all, before I go on to agenda items, I'd like to welcome our new town clerk, Mr Adam Chugg, and I hope you'll enjoy our meeting tonight.
Thank you very much, Constable Warren. It's an absolute pleasure to be here and also a pleasure to be in post. I took up the position on the 1st of December, so this is my second week, and it's an absolute honour to become the town clerk of Seaford. Really excited about that. We're proud Seafordian since 2006. Love the town, love living here, and really excited about the opportunities for the council to do what it can for the betterment of Seaford and working with you all. So thank you and look forward to welcoming everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Right, moving on to the agenda. Item one, apologies for absence and declarations of substitute members.
Apology made from councillor Jim Lord and those substitutes declared.
Thank you. Item two, disclosure of interest. To deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosure for pecuniary interests and interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act 2011 in relation to the matters on the agenda. Constable Argent.
I would like to not vote on anything to do with 1 Chinton Lane, which is LW stroke 20 stroke 02721. As they are friends of mine.
Thank you, Constable Argent. Anybody else? Councillor Edison.
Yes, Chair, thank you. I've had sight of a letter sent in by a resident quite close to the development in Stain Road, and she is known to me. I need instructions as to how we string on this one. I'll leave it in your hands.
Was she a personal friend?
Yes.
It's up to you if you feel more comfortable, like Constable Argent, that you don't, you know, don't participate on this one.
Well, she, I mean, obviously, she's written in as a neighbour opposite that. You know, I suppose it could be seen as affecting my decision, but I don't think it will.
What do you think, Geoff? You're muted, Geoff.
It depends how close the friendship is. I mean, it's not quite, it's not quite as sensitive as where the applicant is a, is a personal friend. But if you've, it's really up to you. If you feel that it will influence your view on the application and you feel that, that it might, it would not look too good to an observer, observing member of the public, you know, then I would stand down. But if it's just somebody that you know, it's not a property that's close to you and, and the person is not an applicant but one of several objectors. So it really depends how close the friendship is, I think, and, and really depends on your own, the way you feel about it yourself and, you know, how comfortable you feel.
Yeah, well, we do meet socially from time to time, but it won't affect my decision, the way I feel.
Okay. Basically, it's not a pecuniary interest anyway, is it?
No, but...
No, no.
All, what I'll do is I'll record, record a short statement on that for the minutes just to make, just to make things clear.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Agenda item three, public participation. To deal with any questions or brief representation from members of the public in accordance with Seaford Town Council policy and local authorities and police and crime panels, in brackets coronavirus, flexibility of local authority and police and crime panel meetings of England and Wales Regulations 2020. In accordance with the Town Council policy, members of the public wishing to speak on individual planning applications may do so immediately before each planning application. So at the moment, any public questions on non-planning applications? Anybody? Can't see anybody. So we move on to planning applications received week commencing Monday the 16th of November. LW stroke 19 stroke 0656, 6 Stain Road. A redevelopment of the site to provide 13 apartments. Amendment plans dated 30th of October and the 20th of November showing reduction from 14 to 13 units. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Mr Blackburn.
Okay. As most, as most of you are aware, I was chairman of the steering group for the neighbourhood plan and was much involved with the design statement that's being considered later in, in the meeting. So I've looked at the application and sought the advice of some knowledgeable colleagues likewise. And the developer has not only not adhered to the design guidelines, he's driven a coach and horses through the guidelines. He's doing so many things that are against the guidelines. The key word I'll be talking about later is context. The whole thrust of the design guide is the context of the building in, in its local circumstances, where that building is located. It should fit in with, not stick out like a sore thumb compared to all the other buildings around. So no effort, what at all seems to have been made to follow the, the guidelines, and it sticks out like a sore thumb.
Thank you. Marian? Can you unmute yourself, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Constable Warren. And thank you to Mr Blackburn. Stated it very well, I think. The original plan were for houses on that site. And I think that would fit in better with the environment that the building's going to be in. This is a big block they're looking at. It's very close to Stain Road, and it's going to involve a lot of traffic in and out, and it's just not going to look right in the circumstances. We would like it to go back to how it was with houses rather than blocks of flats. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I see anybody else?
So there's an additional objection which, which somebody asked me to, to report to you. She sent it in a few hours ago, if I could just refer to that. There are several objections along similar grounds on the website already, but this is an objection from Victoria Palmer of 27 Steen Road. And she, she backs up really the, the objections that have been expressed by the, by Keith Blackburn and by the resident. It's too bulky, mass, not in context as far as design's concerned, would be overprominent and dominating, dominating the conservation area and very little space for planting around the building as well. And it appears to be designed in what could be called the new London vernacular rather than the Seaford vernacular. So as I say, she did ask that that late objection be reported.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lacey Slater, did I see your hand up?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Okay. Last year, the original application was deemed to, as I quote, "overdevelopment", the block would be out of character and scale. The block would have an adverse impact on the adjoining conservation area, in particular 19 to 23 Stain Road. The appropriate, the original proposals would be far more appropriate of the six houses and in keeping with the character of the area. I hope the committee will refuse this development as it seems to be two storeys higher than the previous one and would be more imposing and over dominant than those previously refused. Also, when you look at their Environment Agency representation dated November 2020, I've noticed their concerns about floating cars damaging the structure of the building, buried oil tanks that can be breached, investigative boreholes that could cause contaminants to enter the groundwater, and that they need to look at escape routes in case of extreme flood. In my opinion, all these are being caused by the developers trying to cram too many dwellings on this little plot of land. Please stop it in its tracks. We really want this waste ground built on, but for goodness' sake, make it something in keeping with its surroundings.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Mr Crowe?
Yeah, just sort of really reiterate what everyone says so far, but just want to add some things, points to that. In terms of this amendment, as I call it, it's quite a different design than the previous one. The, the actual floor area, as quoted from the drawing, is very similar. I like reduces the number of units by one. It's actually a very similar floor area as well. And the, the other point about it as well, they've actually got a number of balconies at different levels, and then also at third floor level, there's also a number of roof terraces. So they actually total another 200 square metres on the development. So, you know, in terms of area of the development where people will be using is actually an increase over the previous application. So I'm not quite sure why they are trying to increase the amount when the previous design wasn't acceptable. And also the configuration of the flats in terms of three, two and one bedrooms, again, taking their figures from the drawings. The previous development was something like, it was actually able to take 48 people, and now it's 54 people. So it seems that they're sort of even increasing the density of the development. And really, it's just, as Mr Blackburn said, it's totally out of context with the conservation area around, which is joined the other side of Stain Road. And also in terms of height of buildings, it's higher than the adjacent Raithford Court, which is four stories, and this is five stories. And it's actually even higher when you look at against Kingswell Court, which is only three stories. So I make it something like, it's difficult to tell from the drawings, but it's something like almost five metres difference between Kingswell's Court and the new development. So it's going to be much higher and much more imposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Cathy Stewart? Can you unmute yourself, please? You're still muted.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
All right, sorry, I'm not, I'm not used to this system. It's just a very small point, Constable Warren and everybody. Living in St John's Road myself, we are very concerned about the corner from Stain Road into, into St John's Road, which people do tend to take it a lick. And of course, the road is quite narrow in itself and parking's on both sides. The street now is usually full of sort of DPD vans and what, what have you. I'm not entirely sure about the new block, exactly where the underground car parking is going to be. The last arrangement that we looked at, the parking seemed to be a sort of turn off from St John, St John's Road, just as you entered it. I'm sorry not to be, you know, too clear about that. But anyway, I mean, that's just the general feeling, I think, in the road, that the road itself is of concern. And also, as other people have said, the heights of, the heights of the buildings are out of kilter with the other blocks and the conservation area opposite in Stain Road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there's nobody else? I thank you all for all your comments. Geoff?
Just to mention a couple of small points. In response to Cathy Stewart's point, I think there is still concern about the parking, the highways authorities comments on the website. I think the parking, the access is in St John's Road, and there is concern about the, the size of the spaces and the amount of turning area underneath or where the parking is due to take place. So there were highways objections to the previous application that was dealt with last year, and I don't think they've really cleared all the concerns of the highways, highways authority thus far with this application. The other point I was going to make was that normally for development of 13 units, the local plan policy would require 40% affordable housing provision or a contribution in lieu of, of provision of units, contribution of money towards affordable housing. But in this case, as in many cases recently around the district and the country, the developers have supplied a financial viability report, quite a detailed one, which establishes that they cannot make a reasonable profit from the development if they have to provide any units of affordable housing or any payment in lieu. And the, the financial viability report appears to be, have been drawn up in accordance with the usual guidance. And unless the district council can refute the points in that report, then, then government policy is that it has to be accepted and that the developer is exempt from providing affordable housing units. I just thought I'd mention that, as it was mentioned in the, in the report which was circulated on behalf of the steering group on the neighbourhood plan policies. So in the Newlands case, financial viability was an issue, but the developers did actually, in the end, agree to provide a certain number of units. In this case, they're arguing that they should not have to provide any units or any payments in, in lieu. So that's, I think, everything that needs to be said about the application.
Thank you. Right, open it up to the committee now. Who would like to lead on this? Anybody? Councillor Hanniman?
I can share, yes, I've been listening to, to the comments from the public. And to be honest, I've still got to go on what we decided earlier and this, the six houses option is, is one which I'd be more, it would be more fitting in that environment and, and the location, especially on the historic, it's one of the oldest parts of Seaford along, along where the harbour used to, where the river used to come out there and, and, you know, where Southwick comes out into Sting Gardens. So I think it's, it's basically inappropriate. And also, I think you need a tiered, it's sort of, you know, you've got, you've got the high flats along the Seaford itself, and then you've got, you need, it needs to sort of go tier down as you go towards the town centre. Now, whether or not that particular block in its own right is fitting somewhere else, you know, but not this particular location. So I'd have to base the objective of this, this particular application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Make?
I'd like to propose that we turn down the application.
Okay. Does that find a second of? Thank you, Constable Eddon. Any, any other comments on this? Geoff?
Well, I'm presuming that the proposal and second are backing up the, the general objections that residents and Keith Blackburn has made regarding the, the height, the over dominance, the, the impact on the conservation area. Is that, I mean, I'm, because obviously they've, there was quite common ground between all the objectors and, and quite, it was quite clear what the headings of objection were. I'm assuming that that's what they are. So, yeah, the councillor Make has agreed, so that's, and, and obviously the neighbourhood plan, the local, local and neighbourhood plan policies with regard to the design and the context and the character of the area need to be brought forward as well in, in sort of to bolster up any objections that you agree to.
Yes, I was going to suggest that we sort of refuse it more or less on the grounds of our previous objections on the previous meeting. Because then we didn't have the neighbourhood plan, so the emphasis need to go on the, you know, with the neighbourhood plan, which is, you know, knowing full use and... They like the conservation area, which is just opposite. So, and this is buildings.
The relevant policies are set out in the statement that, that was circulated earlier. Quite, I apologize for that, it's only circulated this afternoon, but it does neatly sum up the, the way in which the, the proposals contravene the, the specific policies of the neighbourhood plan.
Yeah. So, I mean, we had overdevelopment of the site. Proposed building is still too close to the pavement of Stain Road.
Too high.
And too high, adverse impact on the character of Stain Road, conservation area opposite the site. So, you know, it's really nothing, you know, has changed. I mean, it's a contemporary building, which is, is dominating, you know, it's part of the town. But Constable Eddon?
I'd, I'd like to just respond to Geoff and say that I, you know, I am supporting the comments from the residents and from Keith Blackburn. This is a, this was a development for houses. And, you know, I know sometimes developers have to make adjustments, but this isn't changing the number of bedrooms or possibly putting another house in or something. This is an entirely different development and that it's not suitable for that piece of land for all the reasons that were given and also for what's in the neighbourhood plan.
Yeah, thanks.
Let me go back to councillor Make. Now, it will be, you know, what we've said of refusing this application. Are you agreeable with, as you have a proposal?
Yes, Chair, sorry, I, I, I should have backed up my, my, my vote to turn it down with, with comments about, to say I supported everybody else's comments. I, I thought it was completely out of character with the area. I'm, I'm very fond of the Stain Road area, and I think we ought to cherish it as a valuable asset for Seaford's town centre, where we don't want to have undue oppressive big buildings.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And Constable Eddon, your full support of the reasons. Thank you. Okay, unless there's any other members want to comment on this application, I'll take it to the vote. So we're, we're voting to refuse this application on, on the grounds which, you know, has been highlighted. So can I have a show of hands, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven against, no, seven in favour of objecting.
Yeah, that's it.
And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we move on to... LW stroke 20 stroke 0721, 1 Chinton Lane. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? No, open to the committee? Who would like to lead on this one? Constable Foreman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I've had a look at the plans and everything, and I don't see that there's anything wrong with the change, converting their garage into a habitual room. So I'm quite happy to propose that we accept this application.
Thank you. Does that find a second of? Thank you, councillor Hanniman. And no other comments? Councillor Hanniman, did you want to comment on this?
Yes, as councillor Foreman says, it has, it's, it has got basically another, another level put on top of the garage, as far as I can see, when they do the conversion. But I can't see, it's a big enough plot to not, not get in the way of anyone else. So I'm quite happy to second it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we take it to the vote of supporting this application. Can I have a show of hands, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Constable Argent is...
Constable Argent declared an interest.
Yeah. Supported. Planning applications received week commencing Monday the 23rd of November. LW stroke 20 stroke 734 Morrison's Supermarket, Stain Road. Proposed impale to the existing entrance lobby, demolition of existing glazing and erection of a new glazed curtain wall, walling and entrance exit doors. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? No, open to the committee? Councillor Hanniman?
Thank you, Chair, yeah, thank you again. Yes, I think, I think that particular entrance is about time. It was actually, it had a bit of renovation on it. And obviously, when, especially it comes to light in these COVID times with the, with the curing side of things. I think they probably had that in mind even before that. But no, I think it'll, it'll be an improvement on that particular supermarket, so I support it.
Thank you. Are you proposing that? Yeah, thank you. And does that find a second of, please? Thank you, councillor Foreman. Any other comments? No, I totally agree with councillor Hanniman. It will be an improvement, be two separate entrances and it'd be, you know, sort of, sort of a good improvement to the building. So can I have a show of hands of supporting this application, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Supported.
Supported, yeah. LW stroke 20 stroke 0793, 15 Crown Hill. Proposed single story rear extension. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? And it's open to the committee? Councillor Hanniman?
Thank you, Chair, yes, it's a relatively minor application of quite a large property, so I'd support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Constable Foreman?
Thank you, Chair, I'm quite happy to second that, but when, I'll just make, to make sure that the materials that are used are actually the same as they will be on the property now, with sort of the bricks, the tiles, the windows and things, because there's no detail as to what is going to be used. So just make sure that it is the same and not looking something totally different.
Okay. Make a comment, a comment, comment on that, if that's okay with councillor Hanniman as the proposal. Yeah?
Yeah. Just for, your matching materials is off, is, is a pretty standard condition, but there's, there's no harm in, in emphasizing it and pointing it out to district council. It shows that we're thinking about things, at least. But as I say, it, it, I mean, also make sure that the condition is imposed. But as I say, it's a, it's pretty standard anyway. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? So can we take it to the vote of supporting this application with the additional comment of materials?
That's supported unanimously.
Thank you.
Seven, seven votes.
Planning applications received week commencing Monday the 30th of November. LW stroke 20 stroke 0727, Avondale Hotel, fortified Avondale Road. Variation of Condition 1 of application LW stroke 17 stroke 0929 to amend the HMO management plan. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? No, open to the committee? Councillor Make?
Could I ask Jeff just to, to expand on exactly what, what this means? I mean, looking at the previous application and then how it'd been modified, basically they've removed practically every paragraph which was to do with the emergency situation, as far as I could see. So could you, could you just expand, explain to us exactly what, and, and where, where we are in the planning process with that?
Well firstly, it's important to remember that the principle of the change of use from the hotel to house and multiple occupation has already been settled. I think it was quite an unusual step for the planning authority to take to actually put these conditions in as part of the planning consent, because the, the district council's housing team would have a specialist group dealing with the licensing of HMOs and the rules of regulations, inspections of HMOs, because it's a sensitive area of housing which needs a bit of regulation. So, but, but the, but the planning authority, when they gave consent a couple of years ago, after we objected to the loss of the hotel, decided that they would put these conditions in. I think partly because the proposal at that time was for emergency accommodation, which is, it's, it would still have been classed as a house in multiple occupation, but really a completely different sort of operation from apparently what is now proposed by the, the new owner. It's, you know, the, the emergency accommodation would have been a, a specialist area of houses in multiple occupation, which would have needed far more regulation and far more safeguarding because of the transient nature of emergency accommodation and, and the, 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 the problems you might get from, you know, might be being used partly as a refuge or something like that. So you'd need a far more hands-on approach for the management of the property than you would do from a normal group of bedsits, which is what the, or small flats, which is what the new owner proposes. So all the, all the more rigorous regulations and conditions which were included in the management plan, which was the condition on the, on the existing consent, are no longer required and they would be too onerous for the, the new owner to comply with and for the tenants to comply with, seeing as that he now intends to run it as a, what you might call a normal HMO. I hope that makes it clear. I think what, what the, if the committee are minded to, to support this, I think they might, you might need to suggest to the district council that they adopt a sort of flexible enough approach to enable them. If, if the accommodation ever, ever does return to being emergency accommodation, as was originally intended, that additional rules can be imposed by way of the condition. But the, it's a belt and braces exercise really, because as I said, there is a specialist housing team within each district council to deal with the, the particular problems that hate houses and multiple, multiple occupation give rise to. You know, the general management, fire safety and sort of the level of cleanliness and, and convenience of facilities, because it involves shared facilities, obviously. So I hope that makes it clear. As I say, it's, it's a bit of an unusual step, but, but you can understand the planning authority being concerned and there's sometimes an advantage in adopting a belt and braces approach like this.
Thank you. Councillor Meek?
Thank you, Chair. Thank, thank you, Jeff, for that. That, that's, that's very good. Do, do we therefore take that the objection by Stephanie Dubus, which is, I think, the only objection, where she's actually cited it still as being emergency accommodation? Do we take it that she's under a kind of
I think she's misunderstood the
She's misunderstood that, that actually it's changed radically.
Yeah.
Though actually her objections don't really stand.
That's right, yeah. I, I should have pointed that out. It's, I mean, seems to be genuine misunderstanding and that, and on the other side, there's a, a letter of support, I think, from one of the neighbours, you know, which, which needs to be taken into account as well.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I've just, councillor Honeyman?
Just, just like to say, there are, there are a few HMOs around that area anyway, so it's not, it's not setting total precedent in the area. But thank you.
Thank you. I've just got one comment of one of the, on the rules and regulations, which is being asked to remove. I feel that should still be included. I don't know what other members feel about that. Do you want me to read it out? Yeah. It's the third paragraph on the first page. All occupiers will have to sign for a welcome pack to agree that they have read the rules of the accommodation and that they have to appear to or make result in eviction. We will operate a three warning system. The first will be verbal, the second polite letter and the third will mean eviction. We will notify the authority as to when instances will occur. I think I, I'm on the, a council representative on the Bishopstone United Charities, which managed the armothers in Bishopstone Village. And we have a sort of similar welcome pack to new, you know, to new residents. And, and I just feel, you know, it, it should be, you know, something which, you know, is appropriate for, for this sort of thing. I don't know what other members, you know, feel about this. Any councillor Meek?
Chair, Chair, wouldn't, wouldn't that be normally a kind of part of a tenancy agreement anyway?
It probably would cover in sort of a, yeah, in a, in a, in an agreement. But it's just, you know, we've just recently had a new tenant in Bishopstone and we did do a welcome pack with contact numbers and, 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 you know, any reason why, you know, I mean, the only reason they would be evicted if they really mistreated the property. Jeff?
Yeah, I don't think, I, that's, it is a general management condition rather than a, a specialist condition for the emergency accommodation. So I don't think there's any harm in, in flagging that up if members want to go along with leaving that condition in place. I mean, the district council can either agree or not agree, but, you know, it's, it's the reasonable comment. It doesn't sort of go outside the, the scope of the, the planning committee and it, it doesn't relate solely to the emergency side of the accommodation. So it's something that can be considered, yes.
As I say, any other, you know, all the other removals are, you know, sort of in keeping with if the remains as a emergency, you know, which is not necessary now. Councillor Meek?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wondered if, if by putting that in, it would appear that we were rather kind of imposing a modus operandi that, that we felt, but actually wasn't allowing the landlord to, to run the, the setup as, as he would see fit. I, I don't know, is that, am I mistaken there? If, if, if it's, if tenancy agreements are enshrined in law anyways, as to how you get, if you are asked to leave, how you, how that protocol works, putting that in is, is just saying, we think there should be a welcome pack. I, I don't know, I, I feel it's a little bit kind of imposing our, our will where, where maybe it isn't needed. I don't know.
Jeff?
Well, as I said, the, the whole exercise in a way is belt and braces, because the, it's not, it's not planning that would enforce any problems here. It would be, it would be under the housing acts and the housing team. I don't think there really is any harm. I mean, if we acknowledge that the majority of the rules in the original set of rules are not required because of the change in the nature of the accommodation, but still consider that there is some benefit in keeping that general condition in to make it clear, we're not trying to impose our will on the, on the, the owner and the landlord, but just a suggestion that that particular condition could still be useful. I don't think there's any problem with that. As I say, provided members, you know, want to go along with it.
Yes, councillor Meek, you happy with that?
Yes, Chair, thanks very much, yes. I, I mean, I, I would go along with that. I just didn't want to, to feel that we were imposing some kind of, you know, our, our will on it, when, when actually, you know, if someone's bought a property to, to lessen HMO, presumably they have a certain amount of dispensation to run it how they want, as long as it's within usual regulations. Like, you see what I mean? But I, I agree, I don't think there's any harm in, in making a suggestion. But, and maybe LDC can, can decide whether they want to make that a prerequisite or not. Thank you, Chair.
Basically, we're supporting the, you know, the application and just making that comment. Yes, yeah. Are you prepared to make a proposal, councillor Meek?
A proposal, did you say?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, I'll propose it.
Yeah, with, with, with that comment, okay. Does that find a second up, please? Thank you councillor Edson. And, and no other comments, we'll take it to the vote of supporting this application.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's unanimously supported with that comment.
Thank you. Right, we go on to tree applications. TW stroke two zero stroke zero zero nine six stroke TPO. One barn house, Bell Road, removal of one conifer tree. Unfortunately, we haven't got any documents to be able to say why this tree has been removed. And I feel we can't really make a comment. Chair?
Yeah, this is, this is a problem which has come up before, a few months ago. Plans and documentation hasn't been put on the website. It hasn't happened for a few months. And I only, unfortunately, I only noticed the lack of information, supporting information yesterday when I, I checked the applications, because I, you know, expected there to be the plans and documents on there in the usual way. So in a way, you, you're not really in a position to make an informed decision on either of the applications. And this is a problem which has come up before. And so we could just go back to the local authority and say, you know, we're unable to make an informed decision because of the lack of information on the website. Or if any of the councillors have personal knowledge of the site, then, you know, obviously we can, we can take those comments into account. But generally, we're a bit of a disadvantage without any supporting information at all.
To say, you know, whatever you think of a tree, and it's got a TPO on it and it's, it's not there for the fun. It's a, you know, it has, there's a reason why it is, you know, a special tree. So so if members are happy that we can't make a comment on this, and I have a show of hands that, you know. Yep. Okay. And
Sorry, that's a good
And the same goes with TW stroke two zero stroke zero one zero four stroke TPO. Seventeen Mason Road. And this is removal of the T1 Silver Birch. I did Google this one on, on Google Maps and it is a, it's a tree in the front garden. I don't know how old the, the picture was, but to me, it just needed sort of a general trim, really. But there, you know, as I say, we've got no documents again, so if we, you know, agreed to make the same comment as the previous application. Are all members happy about that? Show of hands, please.
That's, that's agreed. I'll obviously point out to Daniel Wynn that, you know, we, it was unfortunate that we didn't get any information on the website. I mean, they did invite us, specifically invite us to submit our views on the application. We've got emails, specific emails in both cases. I didn't just pick up the application from the weekly list. So it's, it's sort of back to problems that we were having a few months ago, but obviously point that out to, to Daniel Wynn and see what, hopefully things will improve shortly. And you get full information.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we're now moving on to agenda item five. And Peter Blackburn, Sheriff, neighbourhood plan steering group, will be presenting a brief session on the design and guide of the Seaford neighbourhood plan. And I'd like to thank Keith on his, I don't think he, oh, yes, you. Thank Keith for giving up his time to do this for us.
Thank you. I think, I think it's, I think it's important that we do take notice of what's in the design guidelines. Hence, I was very happy to come. I'll try to go the wonders of new technology and share, share the screen. A tense moment, have I shared the screen with you all? Yes?
Yeah.
Good, good. Right, can I start off by misquoting Tony Blair a long time ago? He was asked what his top three priorities would be and he said, education, education, education. Now, as far as the design guide is concerned, I would say our priority should be, our top three priority should be context, context, context. And there's one thing you remember from the presentation, I'd like you to, to remember that word. And it's very important. My objective tonight is not to make you all experts, because I'm not really an expert, but I, my objective is to encourage you to use the, the guidelines, because I think they're very worthwhile. And the, the way I would be doing that is I'll link the design guidelines to the neighbourhood plan itself and then go through some general design guidelines, character areas, guidelines for buildings, examples for Seaford East and then some questions at the end. It's the guidelines for buildings which will be the most used part of the guidelines by this committee, because, because that's different sorts of, of extensions. But nevertheless, the whole of the guidelines apply to all, all developments. And as, as ever, not, probably not as ever, the government's white paper had lots of flaws in the white paper as we perceived the, the paper, but it was keen to encourage a much greater focus on design quality at the local level, which is what it said. And in order to try and give that some teeth, there's various proposals, including establishing a new body to support the delivery of design codes, because they kept talking about beautiful homes. So we're very much swimming with, with the tide, having a design guidelines. Lewis have not had them in the past and we've not had them. And we employ specialist consultants, ACOM, and I think they've done a very good job for us. So if I can just start off by linking the guidelines to the plan itself. The, the teeth in the plan are a list of policies which the local planning authority are required to police, to ensure that developments satisfy those policies. The first two policies, one is developments The first two policies, one is developments affecting the South Downs National Park. And if I learned from being involved in the neighbourhood plan, it doesn't need a a development doesn't need to be within the national park in order to have an impact on the national park. So the that policy would apply to premises that could overlook the national park. And the policy requires that the plans take note of the landscape setting of Seaford, the key views, and the natural locally distinctive landscape, including trees and hedge rows, biodiversity, geology, geological and heritage interest. So it's that there's a lot more to being within the national, to being adjacent to the national park than just saying, oh, it doesn't matter to us, because it 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 does. The second policy is the design development for the rest of Seaford. So that's most of Seaford. The this will apply to. And that policy says should have regard to the general design guidelines. And again, it refers to the distinctive characteristics of Seaford and its setting and key views. And the need for connectivity for cyclists and pedestrians between the site and local services. High quality building design, energy efficiency. I was pleased to see that were quite a few of the members of the Working Party on Climate Change are here. I was talking to last night, are here tonight. And this, these guidelines are an opportunity for the those members to have some teeth. Because the guidelines require good energy efficiency, use of sustainable materials and so on. And there are other requirements like outdoor amenity space, which would normally be a bigger development. And obviously, they should take it to provide improved green infrastructure and linkage to green spaces. So there's a common thread right the way through the plan about the importance of sustainability, green spaces, biodiversity. So that's the context for the design guidelines. So what what I will now do is just go through the the guidelines and just pick out some things to to emphasise. There's general design guidelines are on page 12, and these apply to all new developments, but particularly to sites with more with more than one home on. So they, the new buildings must not be reviewed viewed in isolation. That's the context again. I was interested to to see the Newlands plans quite a while ago, and I was asked to comment about whether they were in accordance with the design guidelines. And they were. They started off with photographs of present properties that are nearby to the Newlands site. And then they picked up those design cues in the new designs they were putting forward. So it doesn't, designs don't need to be the same, but they need to pick up some of the cues from the designs of properties that are already there. And it's not just a matter of the buildings on the site, but it's the streets, it's the space, it's the density, height and mass. That sounds horribly like that the there's somebody knocking at the door. So it looks like I'd better pause, if I may, just for five minutes. Is it okay? Yes. Yeah, can I pause for five minutes and possibly just continue with the other items on the on the agenda? I'll be back very quickly.
Okay. Shall we go on to agenda? Item seven. Because I think agenda item six is going to be quite a bit of discussion on that one. So if we, while Keith is, until Keith comes back, we go to agenda item seven on page nine. And this is the road closure application for the South Coast Triumphon twenty twenty one. And to consider the report of planning officer informing committee of the road closure applicant for the South Coast Triumphon on the twenty first of August.
You have nothing to add to the report, madam?
I'll get the page up. All right. So have the committee got any further comments? Councillor Argent? Can you unmute yourself, please? I can't hear you. You're still muted.
My brain.
There you go. That's it.
Yeah, I think by the better August, we should be starting to get back to a little bit of normality.
Let's hope so, fingers crossed.
I can't say anything. Yeah, I propose we accept it.
Okay, thank you. Does that find a second, though? Thank you, councillor Edson. Any other comments? I mean, this layout has worked. Oh, councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it'd be nice to see events starting to happen again. And this is a great event for the town, which has usually happened every year for quite a few years. So it'd be great to see it back again.
Yeah, thank you. And the format works well. So can I put it to the committee that we, you know, we support this, you know, the road closure? Show hindspace.
That's unanimously
Yeah.
Supported. Thank you.
And then going on to agenda item eight, to note the contents of the report on page ten. Any comments on this, Geoff?
The the reasons for refusal are summarized there. It's good to it's good to see that the district councillors supported our objections in both those cases. Or in all in all three cases, actually, yes. There is an enforcement problem at Northway, which I know that the owner is getting very frustrated, the the neighbour is getting very frustrated about. Because the the owner of one, two, five Northway is actually carrying on with the construction of a tree house. But I know that Lewis District Council is quite short-staffed in the enforcement section at the moment. But I'm trying to sort of liaise between the owner, the the, sorry, keep saying the owner, the neighbour, the objector, and the enforcement section to try and get things moving. On hindover, I think the feeling of the district council was that three houses might be appropriate here rather than four on this on this plot of the this is quite a large property, quite a large plot. And the the idea was that the architect was just trying to squeeze too much on. So I don't know if there'll be a follow, either an appeal or a follow-up application just for three houses. But it's good to see our views being supported anyway. The local members will agree.
Any other comments, councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Lewis District Council has a new enforcement officer starting on the fourteenth of December. So hopefully, we'll start to see improvements in that area.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you for that information. Councillor Makey?
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, Chair. I'm glad to hear that, councillor Borman. That's been long in the waiting. But I just wanted to to add to that, you know, this is a problem we've got. If you don't have enforcement and someone just decides they're going to carry on building, then you have the same problem that we've had at Three Sherwood Road, where I have to say, there were three enormous low loaders in the street the other day. I wasn't here, my wife was here. And apparently, there was a huge amount of stuff going on, a digger, and then a huge hot tub was delivered for this garden, which has no planning permission for this conversion. And we don't know what L D C is going to do about that yet. But but the more that goes in there, the less he's, the more he's going to dig his heels in, you know, this is the problem. And I I just wonder how that's going to progress, because the neighbours are so fed up about it. And interestingly, Keith was just talking about teeth. Well, you know, we we you've told us, Geoff, we don't have much teeth in in the Seaford Town Council, really. And I was just thinking of, you know, energy efficiency, which I've raised with you before. And you've said, well, the thing is, the planners, developers only have to fit their projects to statutory government requirements. But I don't see how we can insist on better energy requirements because it's in our neighbourhood plan. But they'd probably just say, oh, we can't afford it, which seems to be their default position. Sorry, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Makey. Did you want to come back on that, Geoff?
Well, just, I mean, I sympathize with with councillor Makey, I sympathize with the neighbour at Northway, having seen what she had to put up with. There are two problems, really. Firstly, is that offenders, if you like, who carry on building to sort of complete illegal or unlawful developments. There is a remedy to use against them that goes beyond enforcement, which is a stop notice, which is a notice requiring them to stop all development. And breach of a stop notice is is a is illegal and could means you end up in the magistrate's court. Problem with stop notices is that if if they're appealed against and turned down, then the council has to pay compensation. So it's something which cash-strapped councils, which they usually are nowadays, tend to avoid because of the fear that they're going to have to stump up thousands of pounds worth of accommodation. The way of getting around that, and it's been suggested many times in the past, and I probably mentioned it in previous discussions. I mean, ever since the late eighties, there's been a move to make breaches of planning control a criminal offence. So, you know, the initial breach, which has happened in these cases, is a criminal offence, rather than the breach of a notice served in response to a breach, if you like. There's two steps, as councillor Makey and other members well know. But the government, although they've been making, they've made sympathetic noises, different governments have made different sympathetic noises over the years. They've never actually grasped the nettle and gone as far as making a breach of planning control a criminal offence. So until something like that happens, you're going to get a situation where it depends on firm action from local authorities. And a lot of local authorities aren't in a position to to make, you know, to deal with that. And and also understandably shy away from any action which could lead them with a large bill for compensation. So, I mean, I can't, I can't really give you any more hope as far as that's concerned. That's the situation.
Okay, thank you, Geoff. So all there is left is that members just note the report. So everybody noted? Yep. Okay, thank you. I see Keith is back with us. So Keith, it's over to you. You're still muted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you're unmuted now.
Yeah, good. Let me just try. Right. And I was just pointing out that the guidelines applies to all developments. But the general design guidelines would be more pertinent to sites like Newlands sites where there's a number of developments. And in which case, it's not just the buildings, it's the layout of the streets and the height and the mass and so on, and the space occupied.
Are you going back to your presentation? Because we haven't got it on screen.
Oh, haven't you?
No.
Oh, beg you. Oh, right. The wonders of modern technology. Let me just try to do something about that then. I think I'll end the show. Right. And zoom in. I'm sorry.
Never works when you want it to.
No, it doesn't, does it? Let me.
Sorry, Keith. Just to say, I think what you might need to do is just start your screen share again.
Yeah, I just stopped. I'm trying to to stop the screen share. There we are. Got there eventually. Now, I I'll go back in to in to share the screen. Do we have success? Have I shared the screen?
Yes.
Yep. Good. Thank goodness for that. Right. Right. That was the last slide I had up. Now, I've spoken to that. So to move on. To emphasize the importance of of context, the design guidelines split up the town into a number of areas. East, west, Dane Valley and the and the sea and the seafront. Because there are different characteristics to different parts of the of the town. And that takes us on to guidelines for the buildings. So on page twenty five of the guidelines, it talks about alignment, building alignment, extensions, how big can the should the extensions be? What should they obstruct? What they shouldn't obstruct? Talks about the facades and the porches. And talks about environmental and energy efficiency solutions like rainwater harvesting, cycle storage, etc. So best practice is laid out in those those guidelines. And a request to be wildlife friendly, trees, verges, gardens and so on. So just to go to, take an example, the properties in Seaford East. There are particular there are particular advice given about the layout and groupings of the houses that are already there and matching, as is practicable, not identical but matching. Taking into account the views from that, from the site, not wishing to spoil views unless it's absolutely necessary. And building architecture and appearance, again, picking up themes from what's already there and enhancing them and developing them. Also mentioned is made about the treatment of boundaries. Walls, fences and hedges can make a massive difference. Driving through some developments where there's lots of wooden fences, rather than hedges, fences rather than flink walls, for example. And then that's picked up about the materials that are used. And there's a palette given for each area of the town. So for example, we take an example on page 52 of the guidelines. There are different palettes for red bricks, tiles, hanging tiles, linked in with flints, with bricks. So for each area of the town, there's a palette of finishes, materials that are appropriate to those sites. And it goes into detailing within those properties. And in that particular example, it refers to the Chington Lane Conservation Area. Now, harking back to why I'm wanting to talk to you. I would like you, when you're looking at applications, to ask the question, does the design proposal adhere to the design guidelines? And in answering that question, that you will want to consider adverse effect on green spaces and views. Are buildings overlooked, present buildings overlooked? Have we followed the guidelines for the extensions? Have the appropriate building materials in that palette that I've mentioned have been used? And other questions like tyre parking? And has best practice been used for sustainability and eco-design? As they're all covered in the in the design guidelines. So it's not something we can summarise on the sheet of A4. But I think with practice and bearing in mind that a lot of the applications that come to this committee are for extensions, that will be mainly focused in part of the guidelines. So I started off with context, 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 and I'm going to end with the same point. That's a key word to remember. If you remember nothing else from what I've said, that would be very useful. So if you have any, sorry about disjointed nature of that, the technology problems. Stop sharing the screen, right. Are there any questions or points that people would like to make?
Any members like to ask Keith a question? Councillor Eddin.
Yeah, thanks, Keith, for that very thorough presentation. I'm quite, you know, fairly new to the council and to the committee and it's, I'm glad to see that presentation and be able to confirm that, you know, all of that stuff, the context and the how, you know, things like the green spaces and does it, I mean, is actually something that this committee does. And I know there are things that councillor Walraven's very committed to and, you know, they're usually her first consideration. So luckily, it is something that we do as part of our committee anyway, is what's actually in your presentation. So it's good to know that we're ahead of the game on those things. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Eddin. Councillor May?
At the risk of boring everybody who just heard me speak before, when Keith was out of the room, Keith, I'll just reiterate something that I've mentioned because of something else that was brought up on another point. I was talking about energy efficiency and ecological sustainability and all that kind of stuff. And I was just drawing attention to the fact that we talked about this before, that it's all very well to say that we've got guidelines for sustainability and things like that, and, you know, insulation and things. But the trouble is that when it comes to planners, planning and building developers, they only have to adhere to the minimum government requirements, which unfortunately the government isn't accelerating towards energy efficiency measures and solar and, you know, air source heat bumps and things like that. So actually, when you talked about teeth, I don't think we have much in the way of teeth. And I think that's a problem. I mean, I think the raise to Bellway Homes as to what sustainability things they were doing to do with heating and and energy efficiency, now I don't know that that was particularly addressed. And for us, as a little local council, I think we can only say that we would like to see those things adopted. But I don't think we can have much hope when the government's saying, build, 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 to quote your three words. And I'm afraid, you know, Boris Johnson's directive is very much, let's get going, let's do away with planning relations and let's build as many houses as possible and make it and place the onus on local authorities to accommodate the houses they are directed to build, come what may, or suffer a forfeit. So I think, I find that very difficult to contend with because I don't see how we can have much kind of forceful taking on of ecological measures. In fact, it was interestingly, I know you talked to the C group last night after talking to the to us on the climate change group. And some people from C actually approached Bellway Homes and said, why are you putting in all these gas pipelines and making it gas central heating when apparently gas is going to be downgraded as a domestic fuel come 2023? So surely you should be adopting different, you know, heating sources. So they actually took it upon themselves to challenge Bellway Homes about that. But of course, Bellway Homes aren't going to do anything about it because they don't have to. And as we know, they've got to make a profit. Anyway, I just, I just put that to you, Keith, you know, just to put my oar in.
You're right, you're right, and we've got, we've got some very small teeth and the teeth that we've got are probably rather shaky. But that still doesn't mean we shouldn't try. And we've just got to keep on banging on as best we can. Just because we can't get perfection, it doesn't mean to say we shouldn't try to get something rather less than perfection. And we're moving in the right, we're moving in the right direction. With having no design guidelines at all, we couldn't quote them to say to developers, well, you should be doing this, we think you should be doing this. We can't enforce a lot of it, I'm afraid, but you're right, yeah.
I mean, I feel that the neighbourhood plan has been a useful tool since it was adopted. You know, when was it, back in February? And we have referred to it on numerous occasions. And what I like about the neighbourhood plan is that it doesn't complicate things. It doesn't go around the houses such as to get to the point. It is, you know, user-friendly and, you know, and that is through the hard work of the steering group. So thank you, Keith. Any other comments?
How do people, can I ask, do, how do you use the guidelines? Do you have, do you print out parts of them or do you, can you rely with them on the screen? I found when looking at the Stain Road application today, for example, the only way I could cope with it was having the guidelines open in front of me on paper and being able to read them rather than have all the problems, I've only got one screen where the plans might be on them. Would you find it helpful if you each had a paper copy of the design guidelines to help you enforce them?
Yes, I think it would be helpful. I mean, I mean, unfortunately, I have got the neighbourhood plan here, but other members might find it useful. But prior to that, I, you know, whatever part which I needed, I used to print off. So I think it is useful, you know, that all members should have a copy, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
You heard about it, yeah. Do you think all members of the committee should have a hard copy of the neighbourhood plan?
Yes, I spoke about this with Keith. I think as well as the neighbourhood plan, I think the copy of the design guide in particular is important as well. Probably more important than the plan itself because it's in more detail and it covers different areas. So I think probably, I don't know what Keith would say, priority, I think, is the hard copy of the design guide to have it there, you know, there, ready and waiting and to refer to whenever whenever a member is looking at an application on the Lewis website, for example. So a bit like a local bible, if you like, for the guideline, rather than the plan itself. Yes, obviously very useful, but I think the design guide would come first, subject to what Keith would say.
Yeah, thank you, Geoff.
I've been, I've been trying for about the last 12 months to get the agreement of Lewis District Council planners and the inspector that the neighbourhood plan should have a summary of it in the plan. And I've given up in the end, I've given up in the end. That planners reasonably, they had to advise, get the advice of lawyers. And lawyers said by having a summary, it was a material change to the plan. I said, why? But my contact at Lewis planners, she's now moved on, and I've just given up because we've got a summary on the website and we could have a separate summary of the plan, which is all right, apparently. But it can't be part of the plan. I don't, I've had this campaign ever since I was involved with the neighbourhood planning to get planners to summarise things. And they just won't do it. So it just makes it so difficult to understand. But even I, as stubborn as I am, I've had to give up with that. I'll be talking to Isabel and Georgia about, because when James wants, James had it in mind to have some properly produced copies of the plan and to have them generally available, it's not going to be a bestseller. So I'll have a word with Isabel and Georgia, if I may, just to wind up and finish up that part of the plan.
Good idea.
Fine. Well, thank you, thank you for listening and enjoy yourselves in future using the guidelines.
Well, thank you, Keith. We do appreciate you giving up on time and we're doing a refresh, of course, for us. Right. So we'll move on to agenda item six. The Sussex County Council's walking and cycling infrastructure plan consultation. Please suggest that we probably withdraw standing orders on this. So I don't know, is Keith going? I thought he was going to say something on this.
I just wanted to make a couple of general points about.
Just hang on, Keith, I'll just get to the committee, they're happy for me to withdraw standing orders. Is it all agreeable?
Yep, that's carried.
Yeah, all right, thank you. So Keith, do you want to have a say on this?
Yes. As I explained to the Climate Change Working Party last night and to the Seaford Environmental Alliance, we've got five projects that we are pushing forward within the umbrella of the grants from the National Lottery Climate Change Fund. The fifth of those projects relates to cycling and walking and wishing to encourage cycling and walking and facilitating cycling and walking. And we're in discussions with James and with Cycle Seahaven. And what we're trying to do, there's a great big long strategy here with lots and lots of detail and almost the kitchen sink is in it. And they seem to have gone overboard by mentioning lots and lots of possibilities and not prioritising them, saying which ones are the most important that we should move on with. And it seems to me basically praying that eventually some money will be available and they can do some of them. And the specific comment, and I welcome your views whether this is a good idea or not, they say there should be cycle tracks on the A259 straight through the middle of Seaford. Well, there must not be a cat in hell's chance that that will ever happen. It would cost a fortune and the roads will be too narrow anyway. So what's the point in putting it there? When, and bearing in mind that we want to encourage people to come to Seaford and possibly even stop in Seaford. And we have a cycle track along the seafront. And we have a national cycle track that goes from the seafront down to Exeter, Overston Fields. Shouldn't that be given greater priority? And it would, and I would say it would be helpful to have some priorities as to what's the best thing to do in order to encourage cycling and walking, rather than this blanket approach. So that was the only point I wanted to make.
Thank you. Right, so I think we'll bring in standing orders again. So everybody happy with that and we can continue debating this agenda item. We want to know if we approve this in principle or not. And then maybe go on to each, as Geoff has highlighted on the report, to go, you know, to make our comments on page five, on paragraph, on paragraph. Instead of sort of just bouncing around, is everybody agreeable on that? Okay. So first of all, are members happy and in okaying this presentation in principle? Councillor May?
Well, I would endorse what Keith Blackburn said, actually. I mean, it's hugely far ranging, which is great because they've thought a lot about all sorts of different areas and different possibilities. However, one of the overriding things that I can see However, one of the overriding things that I can see in their suggestions is they're trying to stop so many rat runs in Seaford. So, they're going to put traffic calming and traffic kind of dissuading measures in to some of the routes along backroads by raising intersections and having narrower access points and also putting cycleways through those places. But at the same time, they're saying, so what they're wanting to try and do is to make the cars go back onto the 259. And as Keith just said, if you're then going to encourage through cycling with cycle lanes on the 259, what are you doing? You're increasing the traffic on the 259 as well as trying to increase cycling on the 259, which seems completely contradictory. So, that's not thought through at all. And I would very much suggest that, like Keith suggested, actually, that you don't have a cycling on the 259. Keep that for cars, keep that as the through route and encouraging the cycling on the quieter roads off that, which are, quite rightly, they've identified link with the, back to the downs through the quiet routes round the back and to the schools and just make safe crossing points for the 259. Because that is our arterial road. So, keep the cars on that and let's have the better quality environments off on the side roads. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I think it may be best that we go straight for it. Do you think so, Geoff?
Yeah.
Okay. So, right. If we go, turn to page five, 2.1. The A259 route into west of Seaford to Belgrave Road. Have you got all this paperwork in front of you?
So, can I make a general comment? I was waiting after Councillor May to say something in general.
Yeah.
Obviously, a lot of these routes are not new. They've obviously been, these have been around for quite a long time in various daisies. So, we're not, this is not reinvented, this is the wheel already there. We're not reinventing it in a lot of ways. A lot of these routes have been established over the years, but they've never been implemented. So, I thought I'd better throw that in, which is true. A lot of the, a general comment, a lot of these routes are, as Councillor May said, in the sense of if you do do cycle lanes, for the sake of argument, Bell Road, there's one of them's going down that particular road. What to do with all the cars? So, is there a policy to move the cars away? Because it's pointless doing a cycle lane, the cars just parked on them. It's a pointless exercise completely. So, actually, a general overarching view for all the routes which have been established. So, what happens with all those and all the neighbourhoods and all the routes? Because that hasn't, again, that's not really clear. And also further in the report, when you go to all the different towns, including Seaford, there is a low, medium and high. So, there are priorities there. So, I don't know who made those priorities, who chose those. There are lists of priorities later on in the document. So, anyway, that's a good starting point for someone if anyone wants to come back.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Hammond. So, is there any comments, you know, on this A259 route to west of Seaford? Belgrave Road? Who about this? So, Councillor Argent?
Well, I've been reading through this document and as far as I'm concerned, it's been written by someone that doesn't live in this town, doesn't live nowhere near this town, is not.
We've lost you, Councillor Argent.
The bother it's going to cause because they weren't no good.
I think we've got the gist of that. Councillor Edson?
Yeah, on reading it, I'm inclined to agree, Chair. With Councillor Argent, I just see on 2.1 that they intend to change the speed limit down to 40 mile an hour. And I presume this is all the way from the Tide Mills car park, right along the Buckle bypass. I can't see that 40 mile an hour being observed, to be quite honest. And they talk about increasing controlled toucan crossings. And I just wonder, do they mean to put a toucan crossing at Tide Mills and another toucan crossing at the Bishopstone Road? And then probably another one down by Hill Rise? I think it's, I think, I think Councillor Argent is right on this one. It seems to be written by someone that doesn't know much about Seaford.
Yeah.
The more I go there, you know, if I might just even go to 2.2. Create a slow street environment around the station and cycle hub. Well, you know, around the station, most traffic is running slow there anyway. You know, so I think, you know, when you, like myself, when you ask them for a 20 mile an hour speed limit along the Esperade, especially, you know, in the summer with lots of people and children and everything. Yeah, yeah, all right, we'll give that a bit of thought. Yeah, I'm not too sure about this at all. I'm not happy.
No, right. Who else? I saw somebody else is saying, Councillor Hammond?
Yeah, thank you again. I'm obviously looking at Route 220 at the moment, aren't you? If we're going to go on the numbers, is that correct?
Sorry?
Route 220 is what you're looking at, if you want to get specific. I said, I'm looking at the Route 220, which is what I think you're talking about at the moment. Is that right? Page 16, 18. Is that what you're looking at?
No, I'm looking at, no, we're looking at the agenda.
Oh, you're looking at the agenda. So, I'm looking at the Suston Support, which has got a map of the... You see what's wrong with highlighting the alternative about going up, you know, going on the quieter road, you know, which bypasses, moves away from the 259 when you go to the east of the town, you know, Sutton Grove and everything. What's wrong with going up that way? Not Sutton Grove, just Sutton Grove, isn't it?
Yeah.
You know, then it joins a bit further up. I mean, I think the existing 259 east of the, you know, where the town centre is, is probably wrong.
I mean, I feel that if we're creeping into 2.2 on page five of the agenda, I mean, I don't think that the narrowing of the A259 should be done. I think that is asking for trouble. Chair?
Well, just bringing some of the comments together that have been made so far. I mean, it seems as if the consensus is covering paragraphs 2.1 to 2.4 in the report, which is the various lengths of the A259 from Tide Mills to Exet, from one boundary to the other. Just seeing the general view, which we can put forward to the county council, put back to the county council, is that the A259 as the main arterial route through the town should be left alone, subject to any obvious measures which need to be carried out for safety reasons or to make it more user-friendly for cyclists. But that the cycling routes should be in the quieter secondary routes, currently used as rat runs to get around the A259 and that any measures to introduce cycling paths and calming, extensive calming measures to the A259 is likely to be prejudicial to the town because of the importance of that route through. So, I mean, that's a very sort of constructive general view to put forward and it really covers the first four sections, if you like, of the report, dealing with the A259 or various lengths of the A259. Is that what members, the general view of members is? And that's the, and what should be put back to the county? Because that's an important, it's a very important and sort of quite extensive view.
How are members, Councillor Hammond?
Oh, Geoff, are we going to go through each individual route? Is that the plan or is that, for the sake of argument, I'm looking at Route 320 at the moment.
At this stage, I mean, you're aware of the way that these measures are implemented. It takes a few years and I envisage that there'll probably be a public consultation with exhibitions within a few years if they, if these things, if it moves forward. And the public feed their ideas in on the detail. And then that detail will be taken and put into draft traffic orders where there'll be a formal consultation and a formal chance to put objections, statutory objections, if you like, which have to be considered by the council's planning committee. And they might decide then to have even have a public inquiry, taking into account the importance of all this. So, it is quite an early stage. And I think there's no real need to go into the nitty-gritty because I think that the views that have been put forward so far regarding the A259 vis-à-vis the secondary routes are very important. And that's the sort of view that the county, I think, are looking for and they can expect on this sort of very early consultation rather than going into the individual details of, you know, calming in a particular road or something like that. So, I think what you've come up, that the members have come up with so far is very important and very constructive because it's more of a point of principle than a point of detail. And that's what they're looking for, I think, at the moment. You know, the way that they've treated the A259 is over the top, if you like, for want of a better phrase. So, anyway, I'll leave that with you.
Okay. So, our members are happy with what Geoff has said regarding the A259? Yep? No? No, Councillor Edson, I saw your hand up.
I just wanted to make a comment, but I don't want to elongate things. I just want to say, I'm not keen, I'm really, really against any adjustments to the main route through the town because the thing that these, that people that plan these routes forget is nobody does that drive through the town as a little poodle out to enjoy themselves. Because it's not, it's a main route and it's, you know, it's something that you drive. These are people going to work and to care for people and things like that. Nobody's doing that as a sort of hobby. And they tend to forget that if you're lucky enough with whatever's coming next year to remain in work, people still need to get around and they're provided with a bus service that's nearly as expensive to use as driving your car to work and things like that. So, I just, a little bit defensive of the motorists as someone who, when I'm not in doing work from home, has to drive to Brighton every day and home. That it's a reminder that it's not a joyful journey and an enjoyable country drive. It's a purposeful use of the road and that probably most people are using it for. So.
Yeah. No, I agree with you, Councillor Edson. I think, you know, the car has to come into consideration here because moving on to the town centre, where it's been suggested in this consultation of pedestrianising Broad Street, High Street, Place Lane, where you've got cars parking, where are these cars going to park? When they're going to stop, you know, have the restrictions on parking on the streets? The car parks are full anyway, as we are now. So, I think, you know, there has to be consideration for the motorists as well. So, I think, like the pedestrianisation of Broad Street, I don't think that's going to go down very well with retailers. We had a meeting with Chamber of Commerce, or probably about six, five years ago. I can't remember now, but it was suggested at that time and it was a big no-no with them. And we don't want to be a ghost town. We've got a vibrant shopping centre at the moment and we need to keep it that way. Councillor May?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think that the thing is, Chair, I think the directive, the idea is to try and encourage people not to use their cars so much anyway. The whole point of the LC Whip is that it's to do with health and making a better environment in the town centre. If you've got cars going through and parking all the time in the town centre, it's basically just a convenience for people who want to nip in and out, which is why it's just a two-hour parking restriction. And actually, there aren't that many parking bays in Broad Street, actually. A lot of people park illegally on the yellow line, as it is. And, you know, if there was to be car parking, I think it should be disabled parking, that kind of access for people who aren't so mobile. And surely people, the idea is that we try and get people to walk and cycle and use public transport into the town centre. And if we had a better public transport system, that would make a huge difference. Coming on to pedestrianisation, I mean, I know there's a big outcry recently when Maria Caulfield put a thing out on Facebook, which was off the back of the ESCC document, I think. And of course, then an ESCC officer had to wade in and say, look, don't throw your hands up in the air. This is only the preliminary beginnings of an investigation and consultation process. So, you know, but people do get terribly upset about it. I know the Chamber of Commerce has said they don't like the idea, but from what I understand, there's only about three traders from the town who are on the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce doesn't have many shopkeepers on it, apparently. It's mostly people who run businesses like accountancy and things like that. And I think, as we mentioned at the Climate Change Working Party last night, that it would be great if the traders, if there was an association of traders and we could talk to them because there is the pedestrianisation actually increases customer spend in the High Street. There are lots of things to think about here. This is, you know, this is only a consultation process and no one's saying you have to pedestrianise the centre of Seaford. But one thing being said to me by cycling people is we never were given an option as to whether cars should be the dominant mode of transport on the street. It happened over time. People adopted that because it was convenient. He, some people have said, a cyclist, we haven't been given the option to vote on whether actually cycling ought to be given preference at all. It's always been the motor car has been the default position. And everyone says, oh, yes, well, we pay our motor tax, so we have a right to be on the road. We can look at it from another way around and say, why shouldn't cyclists and pedestrians be given more preference? You know, why does the car always take precedence? I mean, in Canada, anybody who walks off the pavement is entitled to have cars stop for them. In other words, an offence if someone walks off the pavement, you have to stop for them. Whereas in this country, people just blow their horns and say, what are you doing on the road? You know, so I think it's a learning process and I think, you know, go back to Tony Blair said, education, education, education. We need to re-educate ourselves to maybe a different way of using our town centre. I think we've got to think of the town centre being a hub for activity, not just for commerce. If we can get people interested in doing keep fit classes, in doing making classes in the town centre as opposed to out at community centres which might be outside the town centre, then we've got to hope that the town centre is a commercial centre and an activity centre. And maybe some of these empty shops could become gyms or something like that, you know, or something where people congregate and do an activity. That'd be great. Anyway, sorry, enough of me talking. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Edson?
Well, I could just point out, there was a time when people complained about the horse troughs being taken away. Which is, well, it's the same thing. It's the same thing. I think if the county council care about walkers and cyclists, then they should do something about our pavements and roads in Seaford, which are considered to be dangerous for walkers and cyclists, rather than start sitting in an office with a map in front of them and a pen and then doodle along, searching for a road that, you know, you can go from A to B and it might be, it might be in a sort of a snake-in way. You know, if they really want to get people to cross. You know, if they, if they really want to get people to cross from one side of Seaford to the other on their, on their cycles, there's a terrific route along the front. And make, make it available for, you know, they've built a bridge over there. We'll make it available for a cyclist to go over there, pick up a path, come all the way along the front. When he gets to down by the Martello, well, maybe build a road over the downs or something like that. Let them take their, their cycle and they can go for miles and miles and miles and they haven't got any, come anywhere near the town. Unless of course they want to. And, and that will save them meandering around. As far as Broad Street's concerned, well, a hell of a lot of people go down there that don't ride bikes these days. Their ears are not too kind to them. And I'm, one, one of them might be. And that's the reason why they use cars and go down through that. Not all of them, some of them, you're quite right in what you say. There are younger people that would do that. But I, I honestly think that, you know, we have to be very careful because we've, we have got an aging population as well as a, a younger population. And we should make sure that we don't push them to one side. When we, when we consider these things, run over.
Yeah, thank you councillor Edson. Any other comments? Councillor Mead.
Sorry, just me again. I just wanted to give you some information that actually a, a good thing that has happened, which I, I'm not quite sure when it's going to happen, but they have actually passed this through. East Sussex County Council are actually going to place a bike rack outside Valentinas, which is down Broad Street on the right hand side, just beyond where, where there's, there's actually a kind of little pull in there, you know, there's, there's, there's a bit of pavement that sticks out in the road. So there's going to be one bike rack there for certain. I'm not quite sure where the other two that we were allocated are supposed to go because they said they can't go where they were suggested, which was outside Harry Nats. They say the pay, they say the roadway isn't wide, wide enough there. And they say there's not enough room outside the post office on the pavement. But we've got, getting one placed for certain. So that's, that's a good, good bit of news for cyclists. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Right, so Jeff, what's the best way to go with this? As we seem to have been covering quite a few points. You're muted.
It's a very broad topic and obviously I'm not surprised there's widely differing views on it. As far as going back to East Sussex is concerned, I think it's the most important thing is to get over to them if, if, if the majority of members agree. This business about the A two five nine, A two five nine being wrongly treated, if you like, in the, in the proposals that have been put forward and that the, the should be left as it is as, as much, as, as much as possible as an odd, as a ulterior route through the town and that cyclists and walkers should be, if you like, diverted to the the other, other routes through the town that are mentioned in there. But other than that, I think it's only difficult to put comments forward, but I mean, that's not surprising because it's a very wide topic and it's well known that, that people have widely differing views. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Because I think it's something that could be discussed all evening and into the early hours. And the discussions would be quite useful and entertaining, but I, I still think they wouldn't come to a general consensus. But I think there are two things really, the, the A two five nine point, if that's a because that is an important point to put forward. It's, it's more of a point in principle than detail, actually. And, and also whether the committee generally welcomes the initiative contained in this strategy, the whole strategy. Or whether, that, whether the, the committee prefers the status quo rather than being you know, messed around by traffic harming paths, network, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So tho- those are probably the two points that need to be resolved. Other than that, there's probably too much detail and too wide a scope for the strategy to to enable us to sort of come to a, a neat conclusion from the debate. There, there's nothing wrong with that. It's just that it's such a wide topic, as I said.
And as you say, it will probably come before us again.
Oh, yes.
Further down the line. So perhaps, you know, when it gets condensed down more, we can you know, put in a more detailed response.
Yeah, ev- even then it will be difficult.
Yeah. You know, it's, you know, it, it's obviously going to be sort of condensed down a little bit, I should think. But yeah, so councillor Edson.
Yeah, can I just point out, on page five, two point four, where they talk about installing cycle tracks down to Exit Bridge. That is a must anyway. That is a dangerous piece of road for cyclists. Because, because it's, it's almost a sunken road. So they're going to put cycle tracks on there. So that would be in the national park, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
They would be doing that. Surely, this, this is a must anyway. If you disregard everything else, a cycle track on the two five nine as it comes out of Seaford down towards it, it is a no brainer, you know, because of the dangerous road it is. And if we should encourage people to use their bikes, well, I wouldn't drive down there on my bike if I could.
Right, Jeff.
There's been a lot of recent concern about the path down from the top of the hill, you know, the, 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 the end of the develop, development on, on that edge of Seaford down to Exit Bridge. Even, it's even very dangerous to get down there for, for ramblers because it, it's eroded and comes very close to the edge of the Carriageway. And the, neither the National Park Authority or the East Sussex County Council, because I had dealings with them over this path in response to complaints from people. Neither of them claim any responsibility because the hedge rows are, that need to be cut back to give some space there, you know what I mean? Going down, on the left, going down that hill. The hedge rows don't belong to them. And they're, they're not inclined to cut them back. And there's, so there's a very narrow passage there. In, in a way, it's too dangerous to use. So it should be closed off and, and, and until it's made safe and alternative, alternative routes down to Exit need to be put forward. So yes, that is a very important stretch. And again, if members are minded to, to resolve something on that, that could be added to our response that the, you know, the installation of a cycle, a safe way for cyclists and particularly ramblers or pedestrians to get down that hill has to be a priority. As I say, subject to what members agree.
Yeah, I mean, I've even known pedestrians actually walking in the road at, at that point. And it is extremely dangerous when that happens. Right, so we've, we've got the the A two five nine that it should remain shouldn't be touched as far as, councillor Mead.
So, sorry, Chair, thank you. I was just going to come on, on the back of what Jeff just said. Suss Trans has actually got us, there is actually a designated cycle route that goes down to Exit. It comes off, what's it called? Is it Chinkton Lane?
Chinkton Lane.
South that goes down from the Little Keeper's Cottage or the, what used to be the, you know, the one with the little funny lattice windows?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that road, the unmade road that goes down there. There's a Suss Trans route that goes to the left across the farmer's fields, does a dogleg and ends up on the Cookmere road footpath that goes right up to the Cookmere Inn. Though there is actually a cycle route there, but it's not designated for walkers. It's actually only at the moment with permission of the farmer. It, it, you know, as, it's an ongoing with permission right of way for cyclists. But of course, it's actually not very made up. So you kind of need a mountain bike, really. It's a bit rugged in places. But what I'm saying is that there is actually an alternative route that could be used for by walkers and cyclists to get to Exit Bridge. As opposed to, you know, the two five nine, which I agree is, is hugely dangerous even for walking up the sidle. I, I was also going to say, Chair, could, could, could we, I mean, Jeff was saying, you know, we, we could, are we happy with it? Could, could we say we support it with severe reservations about sundry aspects of it? For instance, it seems to me that they're wanting to take out all the mini roundabouts throughout the town, which, which is a crazy idea. They're, they're very useful mini roundabouts for, for, for free flow traffic. So I, I mean, I would say we, we could support it in principle as, as an initiative and as a, as a good way forward. But a lot of the suggestions they're making really need looking at and, and some of them are, are really not, you know, fit for purpose at all. I don't know if we can put something like that, can we, Jeff? You're very clever at writing these things.
What, what comes to mind is that, I mean, in that area, we can support the initiative regarding making the town more cycle, investing in the town to make it more cycling and walker friendly. But we have major reservations about many of the details of the plans put forward or some, something like that. I mean, you can't go into can't, it'd be difficult to go into those details because again, that, that we could debate it another hour or so. Some people would agree, some not. But as a general sort of, a, a general response, you know, support the initiative and the the prospect of funding and making more cycling walker friendly, but major reservations with a, a certain details. And in, in particular, then you could mention the, the A two five nine business, you know, the general way and that's been, way that's been treated. Now that would be, that would be a, a response.
Yeah.
Think, you know, which would carry some weight, but it's difficult to go into more detail, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I think that, I think that is a, a good, good start on this. So are, are members happy with that sort of supporting in principles but of the initiative? And, and but we have, you know, sort of major reservations. And then give like the A two five nine.
As an example.
As an example. Councillor Honeyman.
Thank you for that. I, I wouldn't necessarily say that, say, say the two five nine is starting. As, it's almost like a starting point, the A two five nine. You've got to, I think, I feel as though you've got to, you've got to, you've got to, you get the A two five nine sorted out and any other sort of proposal or possible others. They've got to intersect, most of them intersect in one way or other. So, so you've got to, if, if you can get the A two five nine right, then the other ones can possibly intersect at the right places. Otherwise, if you get the A two five nine wrong, then it's going to be a bit tricky. I think that's, that's how I sort of see it, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah.
The way it's worded. Yeah, if you, if you, if you say that more more work needs to be carried out on the, the A two five nine vis a vis the secondary routes or something like that, or I, I don't know. It's difficult to work in councillor Honeyman's concerns. It's, it's just that, to me, the general concern was that the, the A two five nine should be left alone as far as possible and the concentration on making the town more cycling and walker friendly should be concentrated on the, the secondary routes like Sutton Road and, and Belgrave Road and those areas around the A two nine, five nine to keep, to keep traffic off the rat, of those rat runs and get the traffic back on to the A two five nine. But anyway.
Thank you. Councillor Mead.
So, thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering if we could say something which supports what councillor Everden and councillor Edson were saying, which is that people in the town who use the town for walking, cycling, for work need to be consulted more than anybody about how, what would work best for the town because we live here. It seems to me that consultation ought to be had with, with key members in the community who represent those different groups who can then feed into this as, as opposed to, as you have, as, as councillor Argent said, as opposed to something being overlaid from outside by people who don't really have living experience of, of, of the conditions on the ground.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Edson.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, as I'm just going through this and I'm, I'm picking out the points where they've talked about a twenty mile an hour zone. Which I, I assume make it safe for cyclists. But they should also include an area that's a lower speed limit for walkers. And that's one of the things that I've been banging on about, the Esplanade. Now, they've made this report, not included, you know, a safe walking area for walkers. And there's a hell of a lot of walkers on the seafront, Esplanade, than there is in places like Sutton Drove and Vale Road. But that's a bus route. So that's, you know, you don't go very fast down that road anyway.
No.
And it, to be quite honest, it's another road I wouldn't ride my bike on either. You know, they, they you know, they, they're very reluctant to put a twenty mile an hour. They've done it outside the schools and rightly so. You know.
Well, I think, I think we need to, you know, we've had plenty of discussion on this and I think we need to you know, try and wrap this up in, you know, in the proposal. You know, as Jeff says, it's, it's an awful lot which we can comment on it and it probably would take an awful long time and and probably in Jeff's response as well. So.
Just as a suggestion, Adam, we could add to, to the, to what I suggested about the, the principle and the, the A two five nine. We could, what councillor Mead has said about councillor Everden's views and councillor Edson's views, that the detail, the details of the scheme should be based on the views and experience, should be mainly based on the views and experiences of residents and people who work in the town or something along those lines, you know, that so that the emphasis is on them, you know, it's, it's another constructive view we can put forward. Because I think, you know, it's, it's important rather than what, for what people think is best for us, if you like. Is that okay?
Yeah. Okay, so what we've got now is to support the print in principle as initiative.
To, to make the town more cycling and walker friendly.
Yeah.
But
We've got major reservations.
Major reservations about certain details, in particular the relationship of the A two five nine to the other routes, you know, and to explain that.
Yeah.
And, and then also emphasize the need when the details are being formulated, the need for them to be based on the views and experiences of residents and people who work in the town rather than, rather than external consultants or anything like that. Okay.
Okay.
Is that?
Does that, is that clear to everybody? Yes?
I can turn it into something.
Can I have a proposal and seconded please? Councillor Argent is proposing a seconded and councillor Everden. So can I have a show hand, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six. And councillor Honeyman?
Yeah.
Seven. That's, that's supported then. So I'll, I'll do a response. It's, tomorrow is the deadline. So I'll do a response tomorrow based on those, those points. It gives me, gives me a way forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you everybody for that. And that brings the meeting to a close as we discussed the following two agenda items. And thank you, everybody, for coming, for listening. And wish you all a good weekend.